Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and sorry we're delayed a little bit. Our facility's meeting went over this afternoon. Move on. And we're all learning our new laptops, so bear with us. Persons wishing to adjust the board, we didn't have one sign up. Vicki, thank you. Onto approval of the minutes of August 4th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those are approved. Onto approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those are approved. No new conflicts of interest were presented. Move to approval of the consent agenda, items seven A through D. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Now to the reports of the president. First, we'll start with dental assisting program update. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marsha Johnson, and I'm director and instructor at Southeast Tech Dental Assisting Program. And I have with me here today Cindy Hermanson, and she's a graduate of our first inaugural class that just graduated. So I will first go through the presentation, and then I'll have Cindy just give a few words of her experience with the program. This is our story, Southeast Tech Dental Assisting Program. Our program is eleven months of dental assisting courses, two semesters, which are the spring, or excuse me, the fall and the spring on campus. One semester, which is the summer semester, is off-campus for clinical experience, where students go out to three different dental offices, which is a general, two general offices and a specialty office, which totals about three hundred plus hours of clinical experience before they start employment upon graduation. The total credit hours of the course, of the program, is forty-two. The core program course credits are thirty-one, and then our gen ed requirements are eleven credits. Our faculty consist of currently one full-time instructor with the bachelor's of dental hygiene, registered dental assistant and dental, registered dental hygiene and dental assistant. We have two adjunct clinical instructors. One has the bachelor's of dental hygiene, and we have one registered dental assistant. And then we have one medical director, Dr. Heinemann, who's a DDS. Dr. Heinemann comes into our clinic on Wednesdays during the spring semester, and he works with the students during clinic day on Wednesday. So get some prepared for their clinical experience also before they go out in their summer internship. A variety of backgrounds and dental experiences for our dental faculty, so well-rounded. Our faculty is myself, Marsha Johnson, and then we have Rebecca Carlson, and then we have Sonya Mullenkamp. Our program has full approval status from the South Dakota State Board of Dentistry. Students completing the program this past year will sit for the national entry-level dental assisting examination called the NELDA exam this fall. Our program will submit an application for accreditation to the Commission of Dental Accreditation, which is COTA, this fall after students have completed the NELDA exam. Our Dental Assisting Advisory Board consists of eight members. We have four DDS dentists. We have one registered dental hygienist and three registered dental assistants along with four faculty members. Our first graduating class of 2021 consisted of twenty-two students, with, we had a hundred percent job placement. The profession is in high demand. And currently, we, this class that we just started, we now have twenty-six students. Instead of twenty-five, one just got added in this past week into the program, or weekend into the program. So here are some pictures of our beautiful facility. The first picture is Dr. Heinemann working with a student. And then the second photo is two students working on another student in the clinic area. And then this is a photo of our students upon graduation in May, class of 2021, our inaugural dental assisting class. Thank you, our administrative recommendation for the school board, the acknowledgement of the report to the dental assisting program. So I'd like Cindy to say a few words about our program.
I just want to say that this program prepared me very well for the workforce along with the lab work that we had, everything in the clinic that was provided for us, and the internship, I would say, was very helpful. And the place I interned at offered me a job, and I know I worked there, and I love it.
Any questions, Al?
I know you have had hard work, uphill battle with COTA not being able to come out and do accreditation, and I'm grateful that the state Board of Dentistry has worked with the programming and support to allow these students to complete and go into the workforce. And is there a waitlist currently for the program?
Not at this time. So last year, they had a waitlist, but not at this time for the new coming year next fall, so.
I think it's exciting. This is just another example of how we're able to kind of listen to the needs of the community and how many positions there are that they're trying to fill. And I mean, graduating twenty-two people and having them placed right away is an awesome statistic and something you should be very proud of, that, you know, they had positions ready for them, and I'm sure went out and did a great job with the employers that they're with. This is also potentially a new line of business that we have. Now we have new partners that we can work with as well for people who may want to be investing time and energy into Southeast Tech to really improve, continue to look at how we can grow some of these programs, and making sure that the students have the best equipment to work with that will then have them be the most prepared when they graduate. So congratulations on being in the first class. That's awesome, and I'm sure you all represent your class very well. And do you know that a lot of people stay around Sioux Falls, or?
I think most of them did.
Majority of them, great.
One student moved to Iowa, Des Moines, but they're a resident in Sioux Falls. So, and I've had a lot of offices call and ask, you know, when our assistants are ready for employment, because there's definitely a need out there for them, so.
Awesome. That's great.
Exciting.
Did the first class, were the students mainly from the Sioux Falls area? Or did you have anybody that came in from other areas across the state?
Sometimes four hours late.
Okay.
From Minnesota.
Okay, okay. And then, so then a majority of you decided to stay, so that's great.
Yeah.
We had some students from north of Sioux Falls, up in the Watertown area, and they chose to come to Southeast Tech instead of going like to the Watertown Lake area. So now this year, we have some students from Minnesota, one from down by Yankton, Sioux Falls area, some from out west, so.
That's great. That's great.
Super. So we're excited.
It's great to pull in from other areas too, so wonderful.
So.
Well, thank you both for coming and telling us about it.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to acknowledge the dental assisting program update?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor of the acknowledgement signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Move on to the budget, FY22 budget final adoption.
Let me just a minute, we'll get up and running here. I do think, giving my fondness to going to the dentist, that it is a good meeting for a budget discussion. It's my only chance to kind of be on level in discussion. So I will try not to be too painful in the process here. President Mickelson, members of the board, Rich Kohn, Vice President Finance and Operations, member Baker. I'm sorry, you have to sit through this again, but we'll try to get through it as quickly as we can and provide as much information. So we're here today to seek final approval of the FY22 budget. If you recall, we did a tentative adoption back in May. We had quite a bit of work to do yet. There was a little bit of a differential between anticipated revenues and our expenditures requested at that point in time. I believe, if memory serves, I made a promise we'd come back with a balanced budget. We have done that. So you are seeing that today as in terms of the post-secondary fund, that our revenues are aligning with our expenditures and what we're requesting. Just a bit of housekeeping as we get started. I've got a PowerPoint that I tried to just hit the highlights of some of the exhibits and not overwhelm with a bunch of numbers and spreadsheets, kind of like what I did with the tentative. So I will be going off the executive summary, and I've got references in the PowerPoint of the specific elements, and I've tried to highlight them on the pages of really the high points that I want to hit as we go through the discussion. It's kind of fifty-fifty on this joke on the budget process. This is kind of what it felt like this year, a little bit overwhelming. So it hasn't really gone over that rate, so we won't spend a lot of time on it. But overall, the process, we really started early on in January, did a lot of discussions, and I don't want to necessarily call training, but awareness to the leadership of the academics and the people that would be involved in the budget process. So they probably all learned more about accounting and numbers and things that I really enjoy than they ever cared to know. But as you can see, they all survived, and nobody suffered too adversely from it. But it was really to lay that foundation of what's the methodology that we use. And like I told them during the process, I can always look at the numbers, but I don't know what you're doing with those numbers. I don't know the changes that need to be made. So we tried to dig a little deeper into the grassroots process than what we probably have done in the past, tried to seek more involvement, more awareness. You need to have a foundation in order to make better decisions. So still remains a work in progress, but something that we want to do. So there's ten exhibits attached to the executive summary. Most of the conversation will be related to the first five or so. The first one is the post-secondary fund and enterprise funds revenue and expenditure summary. Then we're looking at the fund revenues, program expenditures by each cost center that we have. The five-year projections, just a couple of brief comments on that. Exhibits five through eight are mirroring what you normally see when I do the monthly presentations, kind of that layout and that aggregation of those various account categories. Exhibit nine, a lot of numbers on there, a lot of things going on, and those are capital planning, which you didn't see at the first presentation. So at least an awareness, won't spend a lot of time on it. It's more the, what's the bottom-line number of, what are we proposing in this budget for capital improvements? What are we proposing for capital equipment expenditures? This is a very high-level summary of just the post-secondary fund in terms of revenues and expenditures. So when we look at our major categories and lay FY21 against FY22, you can see where the changes are taking place. It's kind of all across the board. The fees jumps off the page, and I'll dive into that a little bit deeper about what's happening there. We saw it in the tentative adoption that we were imposing some additional program fees. That's why that number looks a little bit higher than what you would see on the tuition. The federal dollars is reflective more of what's coming in in the higher education, emergency relief, what we've programmed, what we're at least anticipating at this point. I suspect during the course of the year, we'll be back with some supplementals, because we have more allocation than what this budget reflects at this point. But we're doing some different things, giving some different considerations before we go out and program, and I'll talk a little bit about that as well. On the expenditure side, this is a little bit different look than looking at the major categories. It's more by organizational areas or responsibility areas. So when you look at the, so it breaks out by academics, the administration, enrollment, management, finance, and ops, some of the HERF funds, then IT, and you can see the biggest investment in resources and allocation is going to the academic areas where we're investing. That makes sense. It's what we do. The finance and ops dropping really is reflective of the capital projects that were in progress in the FY21 budget, the completion of that tech area, the renovations over in Mickelson, that carried over from FY20. So you're starting to see that falling off and not that level of expenditure on the capital side of it from a finance and operations standpoint. When we look at exhibit one, which the heading on it, again, post-secondary technical and enterprise funds, a couple salient points, if you follow the references back to there. Again, number one, I'm just, again, reiterating that we do have the post-secondary fund balance. So our revenues, our anticipated revenues are going to align with what our anticipated requests are. Obviously, it's a plan. It's not an absolute, but that's the objective at the start of the year. Tuition and fees and state revenue, what I wanted to emphasize here is the reality or the importance of the fact that eighty-six percent of our revenues are tied to enrollment, either within the current year or in arrears as we look at our state funding. So enrollment is a critical, critical element to providing the resources that we have. The miscellaneous sources tend to stay fairly flat, and the local sources tend to stay very flat as well. So the growth is either coming from changing rates on the tuition and fees or increased enrollments. The third point I wanted to mention, kind of below the line, as you look at that breakout of expenditures, and not unlike the K-12 system, we're in the people business. So seventy-two percent of our operating expenditures, that's excluding capital, is related to salaries and benefits. Because we don't have a capital outlay fund, that number will move. So I split it out between operating and as a percentage of total expenditures in FY22. We're looking at sixty-four percent related to our full-time, part-time staffing to provide the services that we are going to offer. On exhibit two, which is over the next page, this is where we talk a little bit about the tuition and fees. Tuition, again, both of these were approved at the tentative adoption. The three-dollar state or the tuition is approved by the State Board of Technical Education in their purview, so they set that rate. And then at a local level on the tentative, we had requested a three-dollar increase as well. Program fees, kind of talked to, and I've got another slide in here that will touch base on that again. But again, that's really, as we formulated those fee structures, it was really looking at where were the expenses of the programs that came up. And I think we talked a little bit about that yesterday. There's different approaches in how the other techs do it. We tended to look at our population and the number of part-time students that we have. So this is very common to do it this way on course prefix, certainly at the university level. Having a couple of kids involved in that right now, I see those credit charges on unique classes that they take. The other techs tend to do it by semester. So Lake area, Mitchell, to a greater extent, might say, if I'm in the auto program, I'm going to pay a five-hundred-dollar course fee per semester that I'm enrolled. We've done all of these things. We've tried a variety of different mechanisms, and feel this is probably tying the charges back to where the services are being delivered of the best of them. It also recognizes part-time status. So if I have a student that's not finishing in four semesters, but maybe is on a sixth semester path, they're going to wind up paying that five-hundred every semester, incurring three-hundred dollars. So that per-unit cost gets driven up in a part-time state of status as a student, whereas we look at the timing these fees to specific courses. It's based on what they're enrolled in, and again, on the services that we're providing. So we feel this is a better match. And as we set those fees, it wasn't an entire arbitrary, well, let's tack one onto this. We tended to look at the program costs and what we were incurring and tried to align with that. That's why you don't see a lot on the business programs. We don't have a lot of costs associated with them. But when you get into the health programs with ratios that are required, the equipment that's associated with that, same thing on the trades programs and the supplies and the things that we use, try to match those revenues up to those expenses. And again, on the federal money, we talked about the HERF. Some of this is programmed in a specific cost center. And you'll see an emergency management cost center when we get to the programs. Some of that's in there. We also got some program in the admin, because that's a recovery of lost revenue that we're anticipating. That, we don't have restrictions on how we use those dollars. It's just a recovery of that lost revenue. So we're doing some one-time things with that, and we've talked about this in the past. We've delayed a lot of furniture purchases and some things that we are in desperate need of. So this becomes a good one-time use, or at least ten, fifteen years before we have to look at a replacement again. The items that are programmed in that emergency management are really focused on remote delivery and structuring classrooms and setting them up to provide that remote. The time we were developing the budget and started to see the cases start to wane, you kind of wondered, does this make sense to do this? Are we having a return to normal? Well, I think we found none of us have a crystal ball, and we're starting to see that again, and it makes more sense to have that in place. So as we speak to that, we're doing several classrooms, not, obviously not all of them, and we're not utilizing all the HERF dollars at this point. So this is a trial run, so to speak. We want to test the equipment. We want to test the effectiveness of it. If it works, one of the options for the remaining HERF funds that we have available would be to expand that into more classrooms and provide more opportunities. So that's one potential source of it as we go through this next year. Speaking of the HERF funds, just a brief summary, there's different components of it. So what we, when we say HERF, we're speaking to higher education, emergency relief funds. There's different legislative acts out there. So the first one is called CARES. Second one's the CRR. SAA was the second appropriation bill. And then the third one's the American Rescue Plan. So there's different allocations in each of those, each of those awards or each of that piece of legislation, that some is a student allocation, some of it is an institutional allocation. The other thing that we're seeing with these, as time has passed, the restrictions related to each of these has broadened. So we have more flexibility to do more things with it. So as an example, under CARES, lost revenue wasn't a consideration, wasn't something you could utilize in the ARP or the American Rescue Plan. That's most certainly is identified as a use of it. And kind of the upshot to it is if you haven't used those funds and you want yet, or you hadn't drawn them down, the conditions of it roll. So HERF one money, the eight-eight-five actually falls under the requirements of HERF three. So we've got that whole amount available to us. So when we look on the student side, the first allocation was split evenly between students and institutional share. The second one required a minimum allocation to students equal to the CARES HERF one. So that's why you see eight-eight-five and eight-eight-five. The allocation under the HERF two was larger for the institutional share. And if you noticed on the heading, there's a minimum and a maximum. That's the minimum amount that has to go out to students. It doesn't mean that we couldn't allocate some of the maximum of our institutional share towards student awards. Then the third one, it switched those allocations a little bit and provided a little bit more to students and a little bit less to institutional share. So long story short, just as structured, we have four-point-three million available to give out to students. We've handed out about one-point-eight through the first two rounds. The next component of it is the American Rescue Plan. We should have some dollars going out here in the next several weeks. Still kind of formulating the methodology of what we want to do. We've done some different things, different guidance on it, like the last one was really to focus on unmet need. Other ones have talked about Pell. Other ones have talked about, do you have needs for tuition fees? So the most flexible is the unmet need right now where we're at with it. On the institutional allocation, we've probably got about a million and a half of that obligated that we've either spent in FY20 that we'll draw down. that we've either spent in FY20 that we'll draw down. We talked about some of the facility improvements that we made, some of the PPE expenditures that we've inherited. The other part of it that's coming too in FY22 will be related to that technology equipment. So, even though it says 5.4 there, and that's a work in progress, there's probably 1.4 that's out there and in play already. So, we still have quite a bit left for that institutional share. There's some reasons why we're doing this. We've got a little bit of time, one, we want to look at that technology. One is, what's the impact to students? We've seen a little bit of a drop in enrollment, so I might be able to recover some dollars from that, which leaves us in a better position. So, we still got time to draw the funds. We've got until August of '22 to make the draw, not necessarily to have it spent, but to have it drawn out of the Treasury. The second piece of it is, as the delta variant maybe grows, as I would expect that to have an extension down the road. But, long story short, we've got a lot of money that we can spend and put to good use in, especially related to remote delivery. Exhibit three has all of the individual programs and the change from prior year in terms of both staffing and budget. So, it's a year-to-year comparison. I tried to highlight the major ones and describe what was going on with the major changes. A lot of the other ones are just some of that juggling we do with staffing as we reallocate them into different positions. Overall, we're up three FTE that we're requesting, a couple new positions, one in my area, and it depends on how you define new, because we make the adjustments as we need them, as I described in the executive summary. You notice there was a lot of changes in, all right, we had this in the tentative, enrollment doesn't match, we're going to leave the position vacant. So, what I would generally describe as new, I've put one in the finance and operations to assist on the facility. So, as I described it to Jeff Kreider, I said, it's a mini Jeff. We need to start transitioning, some session planning for that. One is the campus is growing, and we feel there's an unmet need there that we can address and start to shift some of the responsibilities that operations services from your side supports to us. There's a housing position in there for a custodial that we added out there that's fully reimbursed. There was another position to help on the HR side of things as well. There's some changes in academics. So, you know, one might go up, one might go down, but those are really new positions. So, you could say there's four, but the net effect is an increase of three. On exhibit four, on the five-year projections, just one comment I want to talk about, there were a couple of things there. One was on the capital reserves as we defined it. I pointed out that 595,000. That again goes back to Terry Avenue. I hope someday I don't have to stand before you talk about Terry Avenue. But it's done, and the reason that it's sitting in that reserves component right now is, I think we're still having some discussion, is the road was completed before the end of the fiscal year, but accounting rules talk about when is it actually placed in the service determines what year that you recognize that expense. So, right now, it's not included in our FY21 year-end stuff. The auditors may look at that and say, no, that's something we want you to see and put back in '21. Regardless, that's $600,000 that needs to be expanded. So, the appropriation exists in '21. '22 I didn't program because I'm not sure if it's going to drop back into '21. So, if it does wind up staying in '22, I'll be back with a supplement on that as well, but we'll tie that in together with the HERF stuff as we look to expand the utilization of that. This question came up yesterday too in our discussions. When you look at this five-year projection, and this isn't unusual, for all the years that I've been doing this, that last year always looks terrible, and you see that decline over the years as you go out into it. So, there's reasons behind that, and it's really kind of tied to the capital. So, when you look at the projections, it's really based on what do we know today? And then applying some factors into them for both the revenue side and the expenditure side. We're not looking at new programming because, you know, how do you anticipate that? So, it's really, what do we know today? What if we saw an increase of, say, 3% in our labor costs over the next year? What if we saw we increased our tuition rates by 2.5 or 3%? What happens with that? We don't apply those same percentages in our capital programs because they're designed to be a multi-year program. And I think what we're discussing and kind of having some internal discussions right now is the reliability of that document. Do we need to do some cleanup on that? And do we really have items in there that we don't need to replace or duplicated? So, that's one of the objectives in this next budget cycle, clean that up. But what we tried to do in the first several years in the FY22, '23, '24 is balance that to have a similar amount. While doing that, you push some of that other stuff out into the last year, and that's why you'll see a big number in the capital equipment in that last year of 3.4 million compared to 1.8 million this year. So, we tend to push it out. It tends to drive that down. The objective of this report is more to look at the trends, what is happening with it, and this is fairly consistent with what we see. We see that dropping over that fifth year, and obviously, we're not going to spend in our capital reserves in '40s next year, in '23. So, it tells us, we've got some work to do in our budget, either on the expenditure side or through increased enrollments. I'm sure our goals will be to, again, have a balanced budget. Exhibit five, just a couple repeats here, looking at the ending fund balance, and again, kind of setting aside the Terry Avenue component of it, relatively the same. So, in FY21, when we adopted that budget, we had planned on roughly a $2.1 million use of our existing cash. The variance that's recognized in there, that 601 that you see in the next column over, that's what we actually utilized in cash, was roughly 1.47, and you would have seen that in the June report that was in the authos for the VP's report. So, that 500,000, if you add that to that variance, basically, we came in about $6,000 better than what we anticipated. So, if we stay within our revenue and expenditure projections and say everything line, revenue is exactly what expenditures were, our fund balance is just going to increase roughly $6,000, even if it maintains our current position. So, from a financial standpoint, we are no worse a year from now than where we stand if we follow that plan. Kind of jumping back into the student charges, they're listed on the bottom of that exhibit five, but this breaks them out a little bit more. Again, talked about the $3 tuition and $3 fee increase, total of $6 per credit, and that's applicable to all fees, you know, base rate, if you want to call it, or the RAP rate is what you would look at calling it. So, that's a 2.41% increase, which fits within, in what I would say, an inflationary type of adjustment. When you get down into specific fees, one that we did add from the tentative adoption, which you approved and just approved in the authos, was a graduation fee. So, when we start to look at what it costs to rent the facility, buy the gowns, it limits what student government, student activity can do for programming and other areas. So, we are charging a graduation fee, which is not, again, unusual in post-secondary. So, we're anticipating that'll generate about $30,000 of revenue. And then the other amounts you've seen before, in what we are looking to increase them by in the anticipated amount. So, that's where that differential from that first exhibit, where you're looking at tuition, even though tuition and fees both went up $3, that $700,000 differential falls within these program-related fees. The other exhibits, the bookstore, food service, childcare, not a lot of changes there. We need to continue to look at the childcare, the liability of that, and whether, as an institute, we're going to continue to subsidize that. Food service, we're subsidizing that as well. I think there's some lost revenue we can recover in both of those areas, which we'll look to be doing. The food service has a little broader appeal that impacts the entire campus. Student childcare center is a little more focused, and again, I've talked about the evolution of that over time. As we move to more online, more part-time students, there's a little bit less demand for that. But we did have good enrollment for Jefferson members, staff members, and utilizing that. Tammy indicated there was some strong interest there, so those are the kind you like to see, because there tend to be full-time students or full-time kids that are watching, so that's a good thing as well. So, we'll continue to monitor how that proceeds and how it progresses through the year. That's the high-level run-through of it. Stand by for any questions about any components of it.
Thank you. And what my favorite new exhibit was the one with the, this that really broke down where the salaries and so forth go, because I think that's very informative to all of us where those revenues are spent, or, say, expenditures are spent, I should say. Question, the additional fees, it looks like round to about $952,000 for this year for students in increased revenue. Would, are any of the HERF funds, the 4 million left, I know some was maybe spoken for, for technology, could any of those be used to offset any of those and maybe still adopt the fees so that if we need it for future years going forward? But to offset for, to help students in their expense?
You could certainly take the $4 million and apply it as a grant to students. The last round talked about how you would have the ability, if the student would allow you to apply it to their account. We didn't do that in any of the other options. It was a straight grant to them, and then they made the decision of whether to pay us or not to pay.
I guess, I'm thinking different. So, I'm thinking like, so the 4 million's allocated to us, and it offset those fees since we're not going to collect them from them, kind of like last year, we didn't have some of those fees, and you said you could use some HERF funds for those fees.
Right, because we waived an existing fee. In this case, since we imposed that, it might be looked at as supplanting that you're taking dollars that you had planned to get and saying, we're going to stick the federal money in there instead. So, I would really need to take a deep dive into that. And what we did in the spring was, because we moved to completely remote delivery, we had students that were enrolled in online classes. It didn't seem fair when everybody was really in an online environment that, that students didn't, some paid them and some didn't. So, those were the fees that we waived, and those were lost revenue, and that was, that made sense. In this case, we raised it to raise those fees to meet our budget restrictions and to withdraw them, yeah, I think is going to meet the definition of supplanting.
Right. Or how about, is there a way to do it where we still collect the fee, and then if we are able to, if once our expenses are all over HERF, to reimburse them?
Yeah, sure. You could increase the grant amount to the students beyond that 2.5 million of our allocation, or for the student allocation, and we could redirect any of that 4 million back towards students. Yeah, absolutely. That would be allowable, and I think they're fairly, that would be received better, in the sense of, because you're getting it into the hands of the students. And from a practical standpoint, we haven't gone out in students and said, hey, you owe us the money, we're going to do this. We're putting it into their hands, letting them make the best decision that they need. And I think that has more viability than, you know, waiving that fee or refunding that and doing that. If we happen to go back into a remote delivery again, and something really blows up, you're probably going to see the same request to waive those online fees again. And a fall in spring term has a much deeper impact into that. Now, we're talking $600,000, $700,000 to try to recover. So, there, I completely understand what you're saying, and yeah, that makes sense to me. It's where, how long do you keep the powder dry, and how long do you look at that, and at what point, all right, we're where we need to be, let's start looking at what we can do with those grant dollars and try to expend them all. And I think, at the end of the day, we're not going to give them back, is, I think, is a fair statement. It's where do they best serve the institute? Either it's a direct contribution to students or grant to students, or are there going to be additional needs? And I think, as we talked about, that technology, that takes hold, and yeah, that really works, and it meets the need, because we've all sat in on teams and meetings, and it's, it's not, you know, it's not perfect. So, what we're doing with some of these technology investments really takes that to a different level. And if that brings that value, then we can look to expand that. So, that may be the focus, but I think it's appropriate that we come back with a discussion of what our plan is, so you all have an awareness and certainly have an input on that.
Thank you.
So, it's not Bob unilaterally telling me what to do.
Any other questions for Rich on the budget? Seeing then, he drafted a draft motion. Do we have a motion to adopt the FY22 budget for Southeast Technical College as follows? And I'm just going to say, as stated in Table A, so I don't have to read the entire table, if that's okay. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Bob, for the good first few weeks of school or in place?
Well, if you insist, I guess. Good afternoon, President Mickelson. No, the only comment I guess I was going to make was that we did institute our COVID policies in terms of what we were moving forward with last year, other than the mask mandates, that remains optional. We implemented on our website, our dashboard, which indicates number of cases, and so far, that's relatively small in terms of overall numbers. So, we hope it remains that way, but I think we've all talked about the contingencies in terms of a need to move to something quickly. We're, I think, positioned to do that, but right now, we're off to a good start. Thank you.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion in second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.